Why are you not home? It's past your curfew. I said I'm at a work dinner, thank you. Henry? Was it Henry? I said I'll be home by your curfew. Yeah. Yeah, she called earlier. She was locked out of board docs, so.
Two and a half, we have two and a- We have two and a half.
She was so upset earlier. Yeah, she couldn't get into board docs all weekend. She's like, is it me? I was like, I'm in. Oh.
Oh yeah, here we go again. Oh no.
I told her to call Lisa.
Your witness, y'all.
I remember sitting in the old board off- in the board office, and they're like, she couldn't sign it, she didn't give you guys the Chromebook, she couldn't get into the Chromebook.
Yeah.
Cause every time she logged in, it would be her feature account.
Hi Becky.
Hi Becky.
Yeah.
And then there's-
Oh, there she is.
Dun 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 dun.
We wanna wait till Ashley gets back to do a group photo? To do a group photo with the new board?
Oh yeah.
Okay. Ashley's not gonna be here now, yeah.
Christian, you don't have to damn right, if you wanna bump over, you can move.
Oh yeah.
I'm tech- I'm emailing the technology department, it'll be fixed tomorrow.
Hey, good evening everyone. We're gonna call to order the regular meeting of the South Euclid-Linhurst Board of Education. Today is August nineteenth and the time is six oh four PM. Mr. Hill, may we get a roll call please?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Here.
Mrs. King? Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Shelby?
Here.
Um, pledge of allegiance is first. The flag is right over here.
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
Okay, item one point three oath of office for our appointed interim board member.
I know.
Alright.
It's frightening times.
Coming to you.
Oh, we can mute right over here.
One second.
Thank you right here. You solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education for the South Euclid-Linhurst City School District, Kiowa County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now, now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance and set office until your successor is elected and qualified.
I do.
Okay, you want to sample boards?
That's sure. If there are none, I might-
This is my right here, I've turned it off, that's why. No pressure.
To those who have viewed, um, my family in the room, um, I'm very excited to serve this community. I am new words to the community, but nonetheless very fond of it. Um, had family in the community. Several family members who graduated from Brush High School. I used to serve ice cream down the street, which is really cool. Um, Dairy King, South Euclid staple. Um, I'm really excited to be able to help lead in our community, um, be a positive advocate for our children, um, and most importantly make sure that we're doing the best we can to love them with the resources that we have. And so, to my parents, I thank you um, for raising me to be bold and fearless and to step in the leadership opportunities. To my children, thank you every day for inspiring me. And to my beautiful wife, thank you for sending me this post one morning and saying, hey, you should think about doing that. And it's been a very interesting month since. Um, so thank you for being along the ride for the journey. Um, and the late nights, of course, last night, I think you caught me looking at board docs. Um, close to midnight, um, but excited to walk this journey, um, for this interim period and we'll see what comes in November. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Did you get that on camera? Perfect.
Well, we're all very excited to have you on the board now and you're gonna be a great fit, so congratulations again. Um, one point four nominations for board vice president. Are there any nominations for vice president? I would like to nominate Ms. Lee for a vice president.
Second motion?
Oh, second.
Any other? Wait, no, a second. Any other nominations? No? Since no second is required, um, can I get a motion to close nominations?
Don't move.
Second.
Perfect. Can we get a roll call?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Okay, election of vice president. Our nominee is Ms. Lee, and I guess we just go through and say yes, right? Correct?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Falkenberg?
I was trying to figure out what to write here. Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
And I am a yes also.
I promise y'all we not moving.
Okay, next is the oath of office for our board vice president.
You solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as vice president for the Board of Education of the South Euclid-Linhurst City School District, Kiowa County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance and set office and until your successor is elected and qualified.
Yes.
How many of those pictures do we have?
I was just about to say, I'm about to go do a thing of this.
Do you have a speech shit? Okay, we will move on. Congratulations.
Nineteen.
Yeah. Uh, two point one liaison reports, Ms. Falkenberg?
I do not, I'm sorry.
And Ms. King is not here, so we will skip hers. Two point two superintendent's report.
Perfect. Do that, I wanna turn this one off. Uh, good evening ev- Good evening everybody. Welcome to the new board members' family. First, pleasure to have you. All the kids are so well behaved. Yes. We'll take it while it's going, right? So tonight, what I wanna do is, uh, two things. First thing is, I wanna go over what our strategic priorities are as a cabinet. I've talked about it in my last couple of superintendent updates, and I think it's important for everybody, not only in the community, to know our new board member, to understand where we're heading, and as we continue to build on two important key initiatives, which are our strategic plan, which is set to launch twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and the portrait of a grad. So when we look at these fourteen, you got it? Thank you. And the strategic priorities that we set, the first thing we always talk about is our vision as a cabinet. This is something that was set last year, I shared at our summer board retreat, on what we were gonna be doing. And there's three words in here that are bold: communication, visibility, and accountability. And I call those our grassroots, uh, of where we're going and how we're gonna get there. Now, we just, those just aren't buzzwords. So, when you take a look at communication, how do we do that? Okay, we gotta communicate at the highest level. So, when we brought on Ms. Cash, we enhanced our social media presence instantly. Um, just her post last night, did a reel on Instagram, and it was one of the most viewed we've had in a long time. We have over a hundred likes on it. Instantly, the amount of views that we've seen, things like that. Okay, that's the, that's the fancy stuff, right? Then we go into, how do we communicate to our staff? How do we communicate to our teachers? So then we started with bi-weekly or weekly newsletters from the principals, all the way out to the staff. And then, this year, we're bringing in board office newsletters from strictly our offices to all staff members. And on top of that, to hit all stakeholders, we do the monthly newsletter, or bi-weekly newsletter. That goes out Sundays at seven o'clock, is that right? Sundays at seven o'clock. And those go out, if you all have the emails, you get them right at that time, and those are starting to come again. What we, what we have to continue to do is enhance that communication, and at the same time, make sure that everybody, that it's accessible to everybody and that everybody's reading it, and that we're getting it. So a lot of people don't know is, we look at the data, the open rates, and we ask the PTAs. We talk to them about it. We talk to our community group, hey, is this timeframe working for you? Are these things, how is this looking? One thing I heard a lot at Donuts with Dom last year, when I was going around to each building in the fall and the spring, was they wanted, they wanted two things. They wanted to continue the enhanced communication, number one, but they also wanted to hear from the board office more. Okay? So, monthly newsletter, there it goes. Okay, easy win. When you look at visibility, what's that look like? I was laughing when Ms. Lee was asking who was going to what football games. Something small, but all cabinets required to attend extracurricular activities. And they have their, they're, they're nodding their heads, which is nice. Okay, we have a sheet for that, and they all have to attend athletic, two athletic, two to three athletic events, as well as a music or art event each semester, okay? And I'm around at a lot of stuff. Um, if you haven't seen me, you probably haven't been there. But, yeah, it's fair, okay? But that part is key because people need to know our faces, alright? They need to be able to trust us with what we're doing and what I'm gonna show you with these priorities. The accountability piece comes on state report card, that's the easy one. That's our number one public measure. Okay? Accountability also comes with, are we getting what we're saying we're gonna do get done? So with that, you can hit that next slide. When we look at our priorities, okay, as I talked about before, these are essential foundation for two things: strategic plan, portrait of a grad. Okay, these aren't things that's worth gonna stick and say, hey, guess what, we got a portrait of a grad now, and hey, guess what, we got a strategic plan. Okay? You're gonna see and hear in a second under these priorities, um, Melissa Thompson's gonna be leading the portrait of a grad for us, okay? I'll have the strategic planning process, and we've already started that, and I said it last, yesterday at convocation, and I meant it. What that means is, it's not a central office strategic plan. Okay, we've already incorporated our community advisory group, our last two meetings, one in the spring, our first one here, we started talking to them about it. And it's a great way to, I already have the community sitting there. We had over twenty people at our August community advisory group. Right? I was blown away. It's not easy in the summer, I got kids too. And having that many people there, that attentive, ready to go, I have that community group, it's a good core. It's not just all yes people. We have people that have people, kids that have graduated from here, we have people that don't have kids here, we have people that just moved here, we have council representatives on there, so we have a good foundation set for the community aspect. Now what we bring in is the staff aspect. And I'm not gonna do that in August and September, okay, when they're all getting, getting everything together, right? We start to hit that in late fall, alright? Put together a committee, we'll start talking with them, and then we'll piece this whole thing together. And I'm currently, um, vetting a couple different companies to help us do that, as we build the strategic plan out. One, it's my first one, okay? And number two, having that other set of eyes, and number three, it won't affect any tax dollars. This would be through the ESC. Okay? Next slide. So, total transparency, we talked about accountability, that last one, these are what our priorities are. Uh, Josh and I are going around, uh, to every single school in September. We were able to hit, I think maybe one in August. And we're gonna talk about these, and we're gonna talk about, um, the levy. That's gonna be the next part of my slides. It's not something I wanted to do a convocation, that's a celebration of staff coming back, supposed to have a little fun, get some words of wisdom, and we keep it moving. And nobody's listening because they all wanna get in their classrooms, right? For the most part, okay? So with that said, I want everybody to know here, on a cabinet lens, this is what we're, this is what we're focused on. These are our fa- this is our focus, our foundation, so we can have that set going into a strategic plan. If we had to do all of these things leading up to it, it'd be messy. If we get the foundations set, then we start building the house, which will be the strategic plan. Under there, you're gonna see our multi-tier system of support, which is our MTSS. The next one, this was a big one that came from my tour of the buildings last year, our optimization of Infinite Campus. So this is year three of Infinite Campus. First two years was loading, getting it ready, all of the backend stuff that I can't explain very well, but it's a lot when you change SISs. Now we gotta turn, we gotta get those keys turned over, so Ron Johnson is leading that, along with Leanne Rising on the academic side, so our counselors can understand it better, our teachers can understand it better, our secretaries can understand it better, and you all as parents, makes it easier to flow, communication flows better. So, that's where we're at with that. We have our chew and see prevention in response, alright, which should be under the leadership of Ms. Bussie. We have our e- early learning transition, what does that look like? Preschool expansion, we've talked about it at nauseam. Our preschool numbers have quadrupled post COVID. We have the portrait of an arc, we have the strategic planning, HR software, we don't have one, we have one now, now we gotta build it, so we have a one-stop shop for everybody. We have expanding career tech options, which we've presented on here many times. Levy campaign, inclusion, and the master facility plan rollout. So we got one check mark so far. Alright? But all of these things, I'll continue to update throughout the year, so you can hold me accountable.
Did you skip, I'm sorry-
Nope, go ahead.
Teacher academies?
Yep.
Did you mention that?
Nope.
Sorry.
Oh, no, no, you're good. So, when we, when we look at teacher academies, what we're looking at doing is building that teacher voice in there. Okay, so when we talk about academies, right?
Oh, the teachers academy.
Yep, development, right? It's something I heard when we were out and about. What does that look like? You know what I mean? How can we build these teams? We have our DLT, we have our BLT, we have all those things, right? How can we be cohesive with them? How can we make them meaningful? How do we make them impactful? So they start building because, so we can get their voices heard, and get action steps behind them. Whether it's curriculum, whether MTSS, attendance, all of those things kinda comes into one.
Okay, thank you.
Makes sense? Alright, on the, now this next one, um, I wanna make it very clear to everybody, this is not easy ever. I always say it's never a good time to go on the ballot. Right? I understand taxes right now, understand all of those things, and our communities have been unbelievable. They've been supportive. I've been here ten years. One of the many reasons why I love it here, we've never, they've always backed us. So I don't ever, I want you to know, I don't, we don't go on a levy just to go on a levy. We wanna, we go on with a purpose, and, and a reason why behind that levy. We would never go on just to ask for more money. And it's a part of the job, it's not easy, especially with the laws behind it, when we can't go out and sell it or advocate for it. Alls we can do is spit the facts behind that levy. So it makes it even a little more difficult. But, that's from my heart, from my team's heart, it's never easy to do that. But, one promise that I said we were gonna do, if we're gonna go on the ballot, we're gonna be ready behind it. Meaning, we're gonna be able to explain the why with bullet points, we're gonna have a full-on plan of what we need, why we need it, and what we're gonna do with that money. So with that being said, the first thing I wanted to share was our master facility website, which is available. You will see this posted everywhere, this is the master facility plan, um, under the direction of Mr. Fuller in the business, business operations. This was built over a year-long process. Throughout that time, we pinpointed, he pinpointed everything from a building structural standpoint that needed fixed. Other people were focused on academics, what, what do we need there? What other facility things? What about our music? What does that look like? Our arts? What do we have to update to continue the successes that we have? From that, and after working with the engineers, we're not gonna go through that, you can archive it on right back here, and it's actually on this, it's right up here, there's a link for it, right there, okay, that, that, that was his presentation that he did. So it, it, it's up there. And if you scroll down, when you talk about a levy, and you add on a PI, I want people to be able to see that we're gonna be good stewards with your money, here's what's gonna happen with it. If this passes, this is what we'll be able to do. And we were transparent when we said, if you scroll down a little bit, Josh, thank you, when it says pending BOE voter approval. So this is where we're at. This is where we'll go pending approval. That includes everything from all the guts in the buildings, to improving all the quality, improving the PAC, improving, um, opening up Southland, those type of things. Other, other things on here, levy info FAQs. I won't go through all these, cause there's, there's a link on here. So, goes through what, what is on the ballot, how would funds be generated, this levy be used? So, perfect example, um, scroll it down, it's a little bit, the screen's a bit weird, go that way, there you go. If approved, funds generated would be used to fund compensation for obviously the staff. Programs to educate more than three thousand, um, students here. Generated funds would also be used, needed repairs and renovations to district buildings, including transforming the Southland property into our preschool building, fixing up nearly a hundred-year-old Brush High School, including the Performing Arts Center, which serves students from across the district, and expanded in the CTE programs. Just a small little tidbit. And then what Lee, what Lee and team did was break that down by building, and what does that look like? So check this website out, um, it walks you through pretty much everything FAQ-wise. It's one click, boom, it'll take you right to it. General school funding info. I'm gonna turn this one over, since it's under his web, webpage, to Mr. Hill.
Yeah, this is just give you the basics. If you wanna kinda dig into our financials, see how we've spent your money previously, it's got the five-year forecast on there. Um, links to Department of Education, funding our schools, I mean, this is gonna give you the breakdown of, uh, the ins and outs. It, it kinda shows you how, uh, we'll get into it a little bit further in the slide, but really the breakdown of reemphasizing that we are locally dependent. And especially with state funding continually, there being minimal increases to no increases, um, and no plan of that to change anytime soon. This, the transparency is necessary to show you that, you know, we're, we're trying to be good stewards of every dollar, uh, that we do spend, especially being that the majority of it comes from taxpayer dollars.
And with that, you can just go to the next slide. So with that, the source of funds, what Mr. Hill was just saying, this is us in this column, and this is the state in this column. So as you'll see, what he just talked about, sixty-eight point two percent, we are locally funded. State average is forty-one point two percent. And so forth and so on. So when you see the state here, we get eighteen point nine percent of our budget from the state, the state average is thirty-eight percent. And that's where that local funding comes in.
And actually, to, to kinda piggyback off of that, I always bring up that we are closer towards like the upper seventies, when the thing that dilutes this a little bit is it's factoring in the federal dollar, so your grants and everything is, is factored into this formula. So realistically, we're actually closer to probably seventy-eight percent locally funded, when you're just considering general fund.
And most other districts is the opposite way around, correct?
So yeah, the way the funding formula works, it looks at the, the overall district as a whole. And, uh, we have the uniqueness of having a, a wealthier population that kinda will skew our numbers a little bit, which then typically when you see districts that are predominantly state-funded, it's because they are considered a low, like a poverty district. And so that's, we are, per the state formula, considered a wealthy district.
So they don't take into consideration, like, how many students are on free and reduced lunch, or, um-
So they, they do more so for federal funding, so that's why we get, we get some of our federal dollars, that's why we're able to be a hundred percent free and reduced.
That doesn't figure in.
That doesn't really figure into the, the funding form. And they, they transition the fun, funding formula, new funding formula, to where it's more of a needs-based, but the, the, really the math behind it still tends to work out the same. The only thing that it limits, in my opinion, from looking through it, is when you had the lower, the poverty districts, there were guaranteed increases that were issued annually with the old funding formula. Those guarantees have almost went away, because, and I won't get too far on my soapbox here, but the idea behind, you wanna make it fair, so they called it, you know, it was unconstitutional, and you wanna make it fair, so that the funding formula is even across the board. Well, I think we know that that's not necessarily the case. Um, it doesn't necessarily equate, it doesn't, you know, the support services that are not factored into that, in my opinion. Um, so that's why, not to go, again, not to go too far down the rabbit hole here, but we are predominantly locally funded, and that's why, eh, eh, truthfully, when you look at, uh, the idea of us being locally funded so strongly, the majority of districts are coming back to the voters every three to four years. We've tended to stretch that between five and seven. So, even to be on that other end of it, to be so dependent on local funds, and not to be coming back every three years, says a lot, in my opinion, about how, how well we're doing with, uh, watching every dollar being spent.
Thank you for explaining.
And this, this just gives the bullet point of what you, what you just looked at.
Yeah.
When it says sixty-eight percent of our funds come from local taxes compared to the state average, which you just asked about, Ms. Lee, which is forty-one percent. And then this last one, um, Jo- I'm gonna turn over to Josh, uh, before he gets into the numbers game. What this says is fiscal caution slash state oversight. So, five-year forecast, in twenty-twenty-eight, we're showing red, which he's talked about. On you?
So, uh, state oversight, it's a three-year process. When you, when you are not solvent for three years, that third year, if it's that third year that you're showing the negative, it'll, uh, kick you into what is called fiscal caution. Uh, at that point, the state starts to get involved. They're gonna come to you, and they're gonna say, we see that your shortfall is blank dollars. We need you to make a recommendation on how you're going to close that gap, how, how you're gonna get yourself solvent through twenty-eight. If you don't make any headway, and you get into that second year, and now you're, you're got a shortfall two years out, that's when the state comes in and basically starts telling you what you need to cut. So, by us getting out, again, we, from the beginning of this, we said we didn't wanna do any scare tactics, but we do wanna be transparent, that if this doesn't pass, we are looking at, cause I still have to, I will be issuing the five-year forecast in November, after the election, one way or the other. Without that levy passage, we are looking at shifting into the state oversight, the fir- that three year, will be in that first year. Um, so we are being preemptive in the sense of getting it out there before we show our first initial fiscal caution, five-year forecast. But, the real is, if it doesn't pass, we are looking at fiscal caution.
I, I always say, the easiest way to explain it, if you have a checkbook, okay? And you're showing red in two years, what do you gotta do? And you're showing red in two years, what do you gotta do?
Balance the budget.
Gotta balance the budget. And how do you balance a budget?
Cut expenses.
Cut the expenses.
Cut expenses, or get more revenue?
We don't have options, too.
Yes. We can't control the revenue end too much.
So I just wanted to, I just wanted to close, um, again, by saying, communities have been unbelievable. It's been, one of this is one of the main questions that we've gotten, is, hey, what happens if it doesn't pass? Um, a South 207 union, um, the other day, that was their number-one question. And again, I can only stick, stick to the bullets of, of, of what could happen. And there's only so much, but that's, it's truth. We'll be in the red in 2028. It's the number-one question, and just wanted to be transparent with everybody on, on, on this is what it looks like. So with that being said, um, again, we're gonna be good stewardess of your money regardless, okay? We have a, we have our priorities set to take us to the future and beyond. Strategic plan, portrait of a grad, and we'll, November come, and, and we'll see where it goes. All right? Any questions?
Thank you.
Questions? Good. Thank you.
Give us something light after that.
Okay, next up is public comment. Mr. Hill, is there any public comment?
I have none.
Perfect. Um, item three is the minutes. The minutes of the special meeting, of August fifth, twenty twenty-five, will be approved as recorded or corrected. Furthermore, the reading of these minutes will be waived. Can we get a motion to approve item three point one?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Oh, no, we skipped that. Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Falkenburg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item four, treasures report?
Uh, good evening. Recommend for approval, item four point one, the financial reports for month-end July twenty twenty-five. Item four point two, the bank reconciliation for month-end July twenty twenty-five. Item four point three, the investment earnings for month-end July twenty twenty-five. And then we got one, transfer of funds, item four point four, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve items four point one through four point four?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, can we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenburg?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item five, superintendent's items?
Under five, seeking the approval for five point one certified staff. You will see some appointments, paid leave of absence, and unpaid leave of absences.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve item five point one?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenburg?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item six?
Under six, seeking the approval for non-rep personnel. There's just one in there.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve item six point one?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Kristin.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenburg?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item seven, superintendent's items?
Under seven, looking at classified personnel, see a list of appointments. There's some change of assignments, resignations of retirements, and paid leave of absences, and unpaid leave of absences.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve item seven point one?
So moved.
Oh, sorry, second. Sorry, I keep hitting it.
Any questions or comments?
It's so good. I was able to meet some of these people yesterday at a conversation, and they're so excited to work here. And I, it was just a really good feeling, Jamie. Thank you. I don't know what you're telling people when they're coming through that door, but everybody just seems so happy to have the opportunity to actually be here. So that was good to see.
That's a secret sauce.
It was, uh, it was, I'm gonna trip, go on the line with that. It was really nice today. Gotta give a shout-out to Ms. Morris, um, over in the exceptional children's office. Um, she did the inaugural, first time we've done it, but a ISA full day, um, in our offices. And she did a full-day training with them, bringing them up to every, everything we do in SEL, what to expect in the classrooms. And it was pretty neat. Um, number one, I'm old. Uh, we had, one of my former students, um, was in there, okay? Uh, number two, uh, we have two retired teachers that came back as ISAs, um, to join us. Um, both from Solon, and we have a lot of experience in there, and just the excitement in the room was, was really neat. So just wanted to give, give her a shout-out. She did a really nice job.
Okay. Hearing no more questions or comments. Mr. Hill, may we get a roll call?
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenburg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item eight point one?
Eight point one, just seeking the approval for a few supplemental activities for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Can we get a motion to approve item eight point one?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, may we get a roll call?
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenburg?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Number nine, superintendent's items?
Under nine, seeking the approval for a lot. Uh, it's that time of the year, nine point one through nine point seven.
Can we get a motion to approve items nine point one through nine point seven?
So moved.
All right, any questions or comments?
Just a comment. I think I probably made this comment before, but, um, my daughter was in, uh, the swim, on the swim team back in the day, and that was when we were at Notre Dame, and boy, so nice to have John Carroll allowing us to use their facilities.
And I, I just wanna give a brief update. Um, I actually learned a lot, last forty-eight hours-ish, on, uh, Mr. Fuller, I'd call him Dr. Fuller, but his wife would yell at me for that. Gave me, uh, full lessons on bussing, and, and the route system, strictly the route system.
What a nightmare.
Yeah. And it, it, it's interesting. So we use, and if I say anything wrong, just stop me, okay? But I think it's important for the community to know, and for us to, um, communicate this out. So we use a system for, called Traversa. And that system, what it does is, it uses school-specific routing language. And it includes access, access pass, or roads not available on Google. It's customized with the district rules and state laws. So sometimes, when we're looking at, somebody might think they live within that two-mile radius, wherever it might be, if you're at the junior high, or if you're at the elementary, but actually, this system, that's universally used, looks at all kinds of different scenarios for us. And LeAnn Heitman and her crew do everything in their power. Um, she's been around a long time, and, and they do everything. But sometimes, with that bussing, and what we can't do, it's one of the big things I learned, if, if it's more than half a mile from your stop, legally, we can't allow you to walk that far, past that, past that bus stop. So, even... See? Even, so even if there's, even if we have some seats available that you can apply for, but if we don't have a bus or around that area, but there's one close, it's gotta be by state law, not a SEL law. It has to be within a half a mile, in order for you to go.
That's good to know, because we do get that. Often, after, after the routes are done, we always get the, hey, I know, after, cause we, we used to promote that. Well, after the school year starts, you can check with us to see if we can get your child on the bus. So that's actually very...
And sometimes, yes, we do have seats available, however, if there's not a stop that's close, and there might not be, if you only, if you're not within the two miles, that there might not be a stop on those routes that's within a half a mile from your house.
And those are the types of things that can jeopardize funding.
Right.
If they audit, liability, liability part of it, yes.
So, and I know it's a big topic right now for parents. I know it's always a question, so I just wanted to be transparent with what I've learned.
It was, it's always good to me when I see them practicing their routes before the school year. You know, it's annoying, and because trying to get to work is more so, because they literally, if people didn't realize that, when I'm like, no, they practiced those routes during those times of day. You know, before they come out, before the school year starts, so they can see how everything goes. So I, I, I always give a kudos to our transportation department, and especially our bus drivers, because they do a heck of a good job.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, hearing no more comments or questions. Mr. Hill, can we get a roll call?
Ms. Falkenburg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item ten?
Under ten, seeking the approval, under curriculum instruction, for ten point one. Just another one here. Through a lot. Keep going. Through ten point eleven.
Can we get a motion to approve items ten point one through, item ten point eleven?
So moved.
Second.
Is that about ten point twelve?
Oh, and ten point twelve, yes.
Do I need to read to it?
Uh, noted.
My fault.
It's good.
Can I get a motion to approve items ten point one through ten point twelve?
So... Unless I so moved.
And so, um, yes.
So moved.
Um, any comments or questions?
Yes, just, um, delighted, delighted might be the wrong, um, term, but so glad to see that, um, we have the nine eleven mobile exhibit, and the kids are going. We have, um, unfortunately, even though it's not that long ago, um, we have ch- children who don't know really what happened, don't know the details. And I just think history, facts, so important, um, that we teach our students, um, so they can teach their parents sometimes, so...
I talked to Mayor Ward about that yesterday at a conversation, and he was really excited about it, too. And that, you know, that made me more so, I was already excited when I saw it was for eighth graders, and I have an eighth grader. And I was like, yes, we get to experience it. But then he was also saying that he was spoken to someone else, another mayor, I believe, he said, who had him in their city. And they said it drew close to like four thousand people. So like, so now he's also having to prepare, you know, for the large amount of numbers that may actually come to see the exhibit also. So it is fortunate that our student body gets to, um, I'd rather them do that than actually go to DC this year. I'm not gonna lie. So that was actually a cool one.
And actually, our band, um, I'm not sure the date, but, off the top of my head, but when it comes into town, there's a ceremony. When the, when the bus rolls in, and our, they asked our band to, to march it in, so. Yeah, but Mr. Shamp and Ms. Harris worked out all the details, so they'll be present for that, too.
It's so great to be included in a city dance, too, you know, especially with education. That's good.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hill, can we get a roll call?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenburg?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item eleven?
Yeah, under eleven, um, just seeking the approval of under eleven, eleven point one, the student and parent handbook and code of conduct. So moved.
Can we get a motion to approve item eleven point one?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I didn't read every word. One thing I didn't see, though, was any of the, um, the, i- if students do not follow the codes, the rules. I didn't see any, yeah. And that concern.
Gotta turn it on.
Thank you so much.
Bottom.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, last year, we transitioned, uh, our handbook to really align it with, uh, board policy, and we worked with Neola, uh, and so what you will see again this year, uh, in that handbook, uh, very similar to last year, is that it will align to our board policy, uh, and then internally, we, you know, navigate our consequences and so forth on a continuum, depending on what the offense is. And so our administrators do progressive discipline in that particular space, but it does not include, you know, if you do this, then you get that, because every situation looks a little different. And so, again, we try to meet kids, you know, where they are, but still hold them accountable in that particular space that lines to, aligns with our board policy, and what our board policy is sharing with us.
Will there be anywhere where parents can, parents can see, and students can see what those, um...
So some of that conversation happens in, at the buildings through our principals sharing those shared expectations, um, out with their staff and, and with their families, uh, in regards to our board policy. And so we do push it out that way, in, in that space, through our shared expectations.
And, and those, those are available on the website, too, for each building. Um, but they, the one that's simple to use, um, is the cellphone policy. So, for instance, that's being pushed out.
I did see that, yeah.
Yep, yep. And, and what, what's exactly happens behind that one.
So, we do hold our students to a high regard, in, in regards to what those expectations are, uh, because we want our, our classrooms to be safe, and we want education to occur. We don't want those distractions. So our building principals, uh, and assistant principals work extremely hard in that space to ensure that.
Okay, thank you.
I can speak for Dr. Fuller. She actually does send that home. She, she definitely makes sure you are aware that if this thing happens, this is what's going to happen. So I do know for a fact, um, that at Memorial, that does happen. Dr. Fuller does make that very clear when she does her, herself. So I ain't been to the other school, so I don't know that. But I know Dr. Fuller does.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hill, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenburg?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item twelve?
Under twelve, seeking the approval for twelve point one, twelve point two, twelve point three. These are all under exceptional children, twelve point four.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve items twelve point one through twelve point four?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just comment, um, I know one of our students served through these, um, these addendums to our budget. I am so grateful for the district, and what we do to make sure that these students are cared for, same as the general population. Um, and so I'm really proud of us, and really excited to see us move this forward. Thank you.
Hearing no other questions or comments, may we get a roll call?
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenburg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item thirteen, Board of Education. Thirteen point one is information. Any information you guys wanna share?
Am I starting? So... Oh, am I telling you? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, the next one.
Oh. So information, then. School starts, yes, on Friday for some, Monday for most. Um, football season starts this upcoming weekend. Crystal and I will be in most of all of the games, so come join us. Uh, we invite you all. So, um, that, and, uh, and our back-to-school nights, where tonight for our elementary schools, I believe, review is coming up as well, so... Welcome back to school, SEL.
Um, and then, uh, the marching band is gonna be hosting the Home Days Breakfast this year again. So if you guys can come out that Sunday, I think it's the seventh of September, um, grab some pancakes, and just support the band, and we would love to have you.
We're in it.
At the, uh, Community Center, and let us...
Lenders.
Are we, um, I know I got a thing in my email for Home Day. Are you, are you doing that now?
Yep.
Not to say, I know I marched all of those years, and please don't take anything away from me, but I just feel that you do a good job in the way that you do it.
No, you're more than welcome.
You know, so I just, you know, you get, you grasp, and it's, you have people that are surrounding you that are there. So I probably will not be there from a board member's standpoint, but thank you, since I know that you all will be going and doing that for me.
Um, City Council rotation, so... Um, city council rotation. So I said I would pick up Cassandra's this month for September.
Okay.
Yes, you're gonna do South Upland. Okay, perfect.
I have November.
Christian, do you wanna take December, take mine in December? And then you can, over the next couple of months, you can tag along with some of us. Is that how we do it?
I did, um, Lenders this month.
Oh.
Oh my.
I'll send you the sheet so you have the dates.
Thank you.
So Lenders is the second then because they're.
Yes.
Because they were there first, okay. And then South Upland is the eighth.
Yep.
Okay. If you wanna come to South Upland and the air push in, let me know if, if you're free. Their meeting doesn't start though until I think eight o'clock?
Yeah, it's later than that.
I guess late. They need to start at eight.
And we'll have a, we'll have a table at, uh, Rock the Block this weekend. Uh, very excited about that. So we'll be fully staffed at our table, uh, Friday night and Saturday. So, and Saturday is also the Memorial Junior High inaugural orientation, student orientation and schedule pickup. So trying to get, they're trying to talk me into sitting in the duck, dunk tank. I don't know how that's gonna go yet.
I don't know who thought about that, but doing them on the Saturdays.
Yeah.
This past Saturday was just very well.
Yes. Made over four hundred schedules picked up.
You were so smooth.
It, it, it was, oh, it was very easy. You literally just walked up to the line, got your child's information, could go to the PTA table if you wanted to and do a few things. But I thought that was very, that was ran very smoothly. I don't know. Kudos to who, how you all thought about that, but that was, that was great.
And it was nice under the bleachers. It was hot. Yes.
Yes.
I look forward to going on Saturday again because we got a kid at Memorial.
Okay, uh, thirteen point two, new and unfinished business.
So. Okay. So, new and unfinished business. SEL is on the move and we're doing big things, um, in the way that we do. Um, I forgot to deactivate me for some reason. So, uh, we as a board, uh, we do operate and we do things through Ohio School Board Association as many are aware. Uh, this year we had the opportunity, um, through our northeast region to nominate a classified employee who we felt exemplified a high standard. He goes above and beyond for everything that we ask him to do, even things we don't ask him to do. He's collaborated freely with our cities, both cities. Our mayors, Mayor Ward literally raves about this gentleman. So we felt we would be remiss if we didn't see about getting him the OSBA National North, or Northeast Region Classified Employee every year. And that award will be going to Mr. Doug Field.
Come on, you gotta come out in front of that camera for a second. Wave. Yeah, come on here, take a bow, wave to the camera.
So, Mr. Field works with our AV children, our AV students, and he does a phenomenal job. And we greatly appreciate all that you do from these meetings to our performances to even doing things at the elementary school where people don't really know that you are doing all of these things. We say thank you.
Very welcome. Appreciate it.
So you will be given this award if you are free on October first.
Okay.
Um, if you can get any, uh, information, I'll reach out to you via email because we would love to honor you there in front of our fellow school board members.
I'm supposed to be behind the camera.
So, um, that was great. And then our very own Ms. King, who was not here though, she received the OSBA Star of Aptitude, meaning that she knows what it takes to be a school board member, which is phenomenal. And those are the things that we are trying to align ourselves with. So, um, that was what we have for our new, our new business. So, thank you.
Okay, um, item thirteen point three, board policy first reading. The superintendent presents the following policies for first read and preliminary review. The South Upland Lenders Board of Education will be asked to vote to adopt these policies at the board meeting being held on September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. So you'll see there, these are all revisions. And they are policy numbers fourteen twenty-two, sixteen sixty-two, twenty-two sixty, twenty-two sixty-six, twenty-four thirty point zero-two, twenty-four thirty-one, twenty-two sixty point zero-one, three one two two, thirty-one twenty-three, thirty-three sixty-two, forty-one twenty-two, forty-one twenty-three, forty-three sixty-two, fifty-one thirty-six, and fifty-five seventeen.
I'm worried we's got a new, we's got another stack from yours.
Okay. Um, next is closing items. Mr. Hill, is there any public comment?
None.
Perfect. Um, there is no need for executive session. So, may we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.